I want to call the meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia, and I'm Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I would like to welcome you to our April 26, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Serra of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on channels 30, 330, and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels from tomorrow until the Board's next regularly scheduled meeting on May 10, 2022. Finally, tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform. So first item on the agenda under preliminaries is to approve Bill's payrolls and warrants.
So moved, second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of April 5, 2022 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So I have a couple of announcements, and then we have some special guests, and we want to also recognize Mr. LeBeau's last day. So let me get the formal announcement here, and then I'd like to invite some people up to speak. So some announcements we have. We are excited to open a second round of funding for Shrewsbury's Small Business and Nonprofit Grant Program. Grants of up to 2,500 will be awarded to eligible local small businesses and nonprofits to assist in the recovery from the unique challenges that were created by the COVID-19 pandemic. Visit the Planning and Economic Development page on the town's website, shrewsbury ma.gov, to fill out the application and get more information. And then, second thing is, Shrewsbury has been awarded $146,604 to fund clean energy projects in town, including energy conservation measures. Under the Green Communities Act, cities and towns must meet five criteria to be designated a Green Community and receive funding. The grants provide financial support for energy efficiency and renewable energy projects that further the designated community's clean energy goals. To learn more about the program, please visit the Green Communities page under the Board's webpage on the town's website, shrewsbury ma.gov. So that's it for announcements. Any other announcements? Mr. LeBeau?
I actually have a business announcement.
Sure.
Okay. Board members, I would just like to report to you that just prior to this meeting, the Bill Early Childhood Center Building Committee, yes, we're still meeting, we're in the closeout phase, met this evening, and our owner's project manager, Walter Hartley of PMA Associates, provided us a financial update that I'd really like to share with the Board and with the community. As part of the process with the Mass School Building Authority, the project funding agreement was originally set at $92,800,000. Eventually, that came down to a budgeted amount of $92,200,000. I am pleased to report that the committee has spent to date, just to hear more than $79 million, and our anticipated total spend is $80,355,000, essentially avoiding $11.6 million in costs from what was originally contemplated when the project began. Certainly, market factors always play a role in this. It was an excellent time to secure bids, but certainly, the work of the architect, the owner's project manager, and the construction manager have been just superb, as was the real work of the committee prior to me joining it, actually, when Mr. Kane chaired it. So I think it's just another example of the town of Shrewsbury bringing in projects on time and under budget, and very pleased to provide that news to the Board this evening.
Thank you. Any other announcements before we get to brief ceremony here to recognize Mr. LeBeau's 24 years of service? Tonight will be his last meeting. I wanted to recognize that and invited some special guests. We have in the audience Senator Mike Moore, as well as former Selectmen and colleagues, Henry Fitzgerald and Jim Kane, if they'd like to come up as well to say a few words, we're more than welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Fantastic. As close as I'll come to being state rep.
(LAUGHING).
Henry, sit right down.
You even have to run far away.
I'm ready. I got the seat right there.
You got the seat? Sure.
May I just note, Mr. Chairman, that I just realized 24 years ago was my first town election in this town, because we moved in in the fall. Why are you looking at me like I'm saying something horrible? And as I remember reviewing the candidates and finding two local businessmen with whom I was interested, and I was very proud that year to vote for John LeBeau 24 years ago. Of course, since serving with him, I haven't voted for him since.[343.81][343.81](LAUGHING). But, Henry, why don't you start?
Well, let me introduce myself. I'm Henry Fitzgerald. I was a member of the Board of Selectmen for six of the 24 years, so one-fourth of the time. You might recall, in those years, I actually had hair, a little bit. Things have changed a bit since that time, but I do want to congratulate you, John, on 24 years of very dedicated service, and I think it's worthwhile we pay tribute to the great things that you have done. As a person who grew up in this town, went to the Shrewsbury Public Schools, went away to college for a bit, came back, was heavily involved in your family business, ran that business, your perspective is different from most other people that have served the community. You've seen this community change dramatically, and you've had a great hand in the things that have happened. I want to say that amongst everything else, to me, when I was on the Board, you were a great stabilizing force. I'd go far as to say you were a bedrock of this community. The things you've done, the perspective you've given, has been unique. I know personally, you are fairly fiscally conservative, but I know you better, and I think you're actually quite progressive. And I'd like to congratulate you for the stance you've took on making sure our schools were as good as they could be, supporting them over the years, supporting infrastructure when that was not the kind of the choice thing to be supporting, and supporting a myriad of capital projects that have helped our community cope with the immense amount of growth we had in a 20-year period from 1990 to about 2010. So I guess in my final analysis, I'd just like to say congratulations, thank you for all you've done, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Henry. It was a privilege to serve with you.
Jim?
I think Henry has summed it up beautifully, in all honesty, John. One of the things I always admired was, yes, you had a conservative nature to you, but you were always willing to listen and ultimately do what you thought was best for your hometown and all of its residents, not townies, not new folks, all of the residents. And that speaks to what Henry just mentioned about your commitment to rational spending plans, a strong school system, and infrastructure. To try to go beyond what Henry said, I think would be a mistake for me. He summed it up beautifully, and I think accurately, and I appreciate the years that we spent working together. We had a few laughs along the way, which I think were incredibly important, but I do think we all came together and worked extremely hard for this town. And you, in your own way, weren't always out front, but you were a very strong, quiet, leading force, and I learned a lot from watching that, and I appreciate what you did for our town and the way you worked with the entire Board, so thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and it was great to work with you.
Want to give a citation?
Well, why don't we go up together?
Okay.
Smother them.
All right.[558.66][558.66](LAUGHING).
John, come on up. You know, he's not giving out to just anybody.[562.16][562.16](LAUGHING). You're the only one who can joke.[566.16][566.16](LAUGHING). Do you want to get a picture? The sister wants to get a picture. Come on, you can do this.
Hannah's going to want a picture, too.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Aren't you surprised to see me here?
Yes, sorry.[596.32][596.32](LAUGHING). Thank you very much.
Here you go, John. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jim. You look fantastic.
Yes, I will.
John, I just want to say thank you for your 24 years of service as a Selectman, as a Town Meeting member, and also on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Besides all the things that Henry and, I was going to say Representative Kane, but...
I could choose to say that.
Is it Moderator?
Sure.
Moderator Kane just said it. I really don't think there's anything more to say, what they've talked about, or your service, but I think it is, the point is that you are someone who cares about the community and cares about the people of Shrewsbury, whether you've been here one year a day or 24 years, as Jim and Hannah, thank you for your years of service, and I'm sure the people of Shrewsbury realize how much you are committed to them and care about them. And if you look at all the accomplishments from the School Committee, from the schools that have gone up, to the police station that's being built, one thing I have always admired about the community is the fact that the elected officials in Shrewsbury know how important it is to invest in the infrastructure, and making those investments take, a lot of times take hard, tough votes that you have to explain to the public. And so thank you for making those tough decisions and doing what's right for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. It means a great deal that you're here this evening for folks who haven't been in Shrewsbury that long. In 2008, then Millbury Selectman Michael Moore and I opposed each other for the seat that the Senator currently serves in. He did very well.
Thank you.
But I did well in Shrewsbury.[710.23][710.23](LAUGHING). But, I mean, honestly, we've interacted in a lot of ways, both as our state senator and me on the Board, and then in my job with the state, working with the Senator as well, and I think it really, you know, I'm not trying to puff us up, but compared to some other things that we might see in the news about folks in different parties not getting along, we did what we did in 2008. We knew there'd be a winner, there'd be a loser, and then we went about our business and continued to work together, so.
And as you said, it's the way it should be.
That's right.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to colleagues. Any comments? Mr. DePaolo, is your computer fired up?
I don't need my computer.
Mr. LeBeau had mentioned about being able to move the question, so we keep it brief.
No, he's not going to shut me up.[773.16][773.16](LAUGHING). John, I told you I'm not going to get all gushy. I do think that what Henry said is completely on point. I've always found you, before you were Selectman, because we knew each other long before that, to be measured and reasoned, and a lot of times, I appreciated the fact that you were sitting next to me when I would want to charge ahead and you would go slow down a little bit, and I just always appreciated when you made a comment on a complex issue and you were able to humanize it and give people this perspective of what it was like from a, just a, not your personal point of view, but from a person's point of view, and I thought you gave a lot of context when you did that. So that's all that kind of stuff, but I have, now I got some other stuff for you. So 24 years, you're usually the historian, but this is John Knight, so I'm giving it a crack. Mine could be a little bit off, but, so the first sitting Board after the Town Manager Act passed was in 1954. Coincidentally, John and I were born in 1954, and even more coincidentally, we ended up being the two longest sitting Selectmen since 1953. I just think it's something like kind of nice and strange about that at the same time, you know, having grown up in town, and I just thought, I just thought that was very interesting. You probably already know this, but for people who don't, John served with 13 Selectmen and Women over his 24 years. He served with two Town Managers. You served, you and I and Moira served together for 12 years, you and I and Jim served together for 12 years. The four of us served together for 10. We had two Boards, and there weren't many Boards that stayed together for quite a while. The first Board, and I hadn't remembered this until I went back and do the research, you, Bruce, Tom, and Phil Hammond, which was also a fun Board, especially when I was sitting next to Tom, and Dan used to call us the Italian contingent, I think.
Mediterranean wing.
Mediterranean, yeah. But, so that was a Board that we were together for six years, and I think it, we worked well together. And then we had Jim, Henry, Moira, you, and myself for six years. Most of us, Henry, call it the Henry Board. I don't know why, but that's the name. Personally, sorry, everybody, I think that was the best Board that we sat on for an extended period of time. I just thought we all clicked, and everybody knew each other's strengths, and we played off them, and we, I just really enjoyed those six years. Just a couple of things, in 1998, well, in 1992, 19, I'm sorry, 1972, we graduated from high school, there were about 17,000 people in town. So now, here we are, 38,000 people in town. When you got elected, there were 27,000 people in town, so the town's grown, the population's grown. If I did the math rate, the math rate, 40% in those 24 years. The school population went from just about 4,400 to 5,900, so a 34% increase. And then we talk a little bit about the things that you were involved with. We built, renovated four schools. We built, renovated three fire stations. In the process of building the high school, we got rid of the portables that were put in place, I think when we were in the 11th grade, and stayed there until, yeah, temporaries. And I go on and on, but we built the senior center, we built the library, the town did, but, I mean, we were, we were part of it, police stations finally going up. And just a couple of quick things. Four police chiefs, four fire chiefs, three state senators, four state reps, three town moderators, and one local lieutenant governor. So I think, as you stand back at it, you look at a lot of history. So, having said that, I wanted to do something because, obviously, we've been together for your whole tenure, and I wanted to do something personally for you, and what I did was had a plaque made for you honoring your 24 years of service and putting the years of service in the names of the other Selectmen that you served with over the 24 years. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
And we are going to get back to having breakfast, COVID or not.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Show the plaque, John.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, turn it around.
Oh, that's really nice. Mo, get next to him so we can take the picture.
That's nice.
There you go. Beautiful. Nice tie, Mo. Very nice. I knew you were coming, Jim. That's where we were.
That's nice. No Snoopy ties. That's good. That's wonderful. Any other comments?
That is a tough act to follow, but I definitely have a few comments. I have had the honor of serving with you, John, for the past five years, and when I joined the Board, you were Chair, and I'm very grateful for the time that you took to bring me up to speed, to call me before meetings, to show me how to find things and to navigate our documents, and just to sort of anticipate the questions that someone might have joining the Board for the first time without making me feel like I had no idea what I was doing. So I appreciate that. I will be the first to say that I really thought we would be farther apart than we were, and then we are. I had no idea that we would see the world in a lot of the same ways and have very similar views and be very fiscally conservative, but yet see social issues, you know, very progressively, and I appreciate that, and I've learned so much from you and your ability to remember all of the history and all of the reasons why we do things the way that we do and to bring that into the discussions and the conversation. I'm going to try to keep that in the back of my mind because that's a perspective that I think is going to be missing as we move forward. It's just the why we do things, the why we govern the way we do, why the process is the way it is. You're always the first person to remind us that, oop, that's not on the agenda, so we really can't talk about it, like, all of those things that you brought to the table, I've been keeping notes on because I know that I have to stand on my own two feet when you're gone, and this seems to keep happening every year or so, that a tenured member is finished with their time on the Board, and it's going to be not too long before this Board is very much made up of people who have only been serving for one or two terms, and that perspective, that historical perspective and that solidity of you being there is something that I will certainly miss. And I absolutely loved what Mo had to say. I hope that you continue to keep, keep the history for the Board in perpetuity, and I think that you have now earned your place in the world where now the phone calls you get will be, can you write a letter to the editor for me? Can I use your name on this? Like, that's like the ultimate, I think, that you've made it. So I'm very, very grateful for our time together and all of your service to the community. Before I was on this Board, I would leave meetings, Town Meeting, and I would always feel like they've got it, like, this, the Board has it, I don't have to worry about the community, it's going in the right direction. I always felt that security, and I hope to carry that on in your absence. So thanks again for all that you've done.
Well, thank you, Beth, and I agree, and what do they say? Politics makes strange bedfellows? I mean, I didn't anticipate how aligned we would frequently be, and we might have, I might have started over here and you might have started over there, but we wound up together here, and that's what this Board is really all about, and it's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you.
Thank you.
Well, I feel a little robbed that I only had a year with you, John. I remember when I was elected last year and I started getting this flurry of emails with, you know, every Selectman since the beginning of time, and I think one of them was a Flynn, and I did get a lot of that history, which I greatly appreciate. There are a lot of attributes I think of when I think of you, your ethics and your integrity, and not just your knowledge, which is super deep, but your commitment to municipal government and how you're always grounded in what our purpose is here, and your critical thinking is something that I've always greatly admired, as well as your brevity, it's super powerful, and it's concise and accurate and on point and something that I kind of look to emulate going forward. So I'm grateful for everything that you've done for this town and for us, and I will miss working with you, but I hope that we'll continue to stay in touch.
Sure, and Theresa, I very much enjoyed the year we've worked together, and, you know, as Beth mentioned a minute ago, the Board is well into, it seems, a transition period, and I have very good feelings about the future, knowing who the Board is, four-fifths of the Board will be a week from today.
So, thanks for the opportunity. Several people have said it this evening, it's for me, John, it's perspective. Obviously, serving as a Town Administrator in another community, you have that unique perspective that you were able to really help me as I transitioned here into Shrewsbury, serving as the chairperson for my first two years. You really flattened the curve for me. You were out ahead of me advising and truly mentoring me, and I really appreciate that. It made my life a whole lot easier, and I honestly miss those first two years when I got to talk to you on the phone so much more than we have in the past couple of years, just as, you know, the work of the Board goes, and I'll always appreciate that time that you spent with me to help me understand Shrewsbury and how I could best serve the community. So that other perspective is that how you take on your duties as a member of the Board of Selectmen, you keep, you've kept this Board grounded and this town's unique governance, and your commitment to broader democratic ideals, and it's just a unique perspective and been a tremendous asset to this Board and to me, so thank you.
Well, Kevin, thank you. Rarely do I say I'm uniquely qualified about anything, but the fact that I was a Town Administrator for six years, I thought I was in a good position to bring a new, a new municipal manager, you know, with the Board, but to serve as Chair for the first two years of a new manager. We hire well, and it's always a tough act to follow. It's a tough act to follow for Dan Magato, and it was a tough act to follow for you, but both of you did it fabulously. It was a great experience, you know, working with you and trying to give you some air cover as you came onboard, and as I mentioned to my colleagues, my optimism for the future is emboldened by the fact that you're here and particularly emboldened by, I'm looking, it's on our agenda tonight, we're going to, I think, we're signing you up, yes, item eight, we're going to keep you with us longer, so I'm delighted to have been part of that process. It's not too often we get to hire a new manager. Mo served with three. That's a, that's a tough act to follow, but it was a privilege to serve with two excellent managers, and it's been great, and I, again, I have great, you know, great things are going to happen in this town because of the people sitting around this table and many others. Thank you.
So I'll just, I'll be brief. Truly appreciate all of your hard work and service to our community. You have always acted in the best interest of our community, worked hard, thought through the issues, and always came through with a well-reasoned decision. We're fortunate for your professionalism, intelligence, and thoughtfulness, your knowledge of our history and putting it to good work, your government insight, we talked a lot about that, not only as Town Administrator but at the state level, to really forge things together, to help us see things through a different lens. One of the most precious commodities that we have is time. We all have a finite amount of time, and you've given admirably, admirably, you and your family, 24 years of hundreds upon hundreds upon thousands of hours. So I thank both you and your family for sharing your time, your knowledge, your thoughtfulness, and all of your skills over the past 24 years, and you've really made us a great community. So thank you very much.
John, thank you, and it was, it was great being, I don't know what you call it, running mates or whatever it was, three years ago, and I was delighted that you were elected to the Board as part of this, I guess we're calling it a little bit of a, maybe it's a generational transition, which is entirely appropriate, and, you know, to all my colleagues who had to serve through COVID and Chair through COVID, God bless you, because nobody saw that coming, and talk about making it up on the fly, you as Chair, Beth as Chair, it's hard for me to remember, was anybody else Chair during COVID?
I was for a little bit.
But, I mean, it, you got to be able to answer the bell. People expect you to answer the bell, and that was a bell that I don't think anybody saw coming or expected to hear. So again, thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you.
Thank you. We have one gift we'd like to give to you, so... Just in recognition of your service, a small token, to very own gavel, recognizing...
A gavel! Used to it, Deb.
Hey, could we, could we ask that the Board assemble under the plaque, John, for your last meeting?
I want to have my gavel here.
Yeah.
There you go. Perfect. Yes, three, two, one. Three, two, one, from here. Next crew.
Beautiful.
One more hit for you.
There we have it. Well done, Henry. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. I assume we had discussed. I think so.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Oh, nice.
We even recognize you.
Oh, look at this one.
It's super long, but I think that the first part of it says it all. It is not the critic who counts.
Not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The critic belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, and that's how we think of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board members. Jeez, if I knew this, I should have, I should have done this soon.
Your first year doing this.
You'll be recalling your house.
Yeah, boy. John, see you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Henry, stay on the gene. Mr. Chairman, may I, may I say something?
Yes, please. Yes, you may.
So first of all, thank you all. It means a great deal to me. I'm pretty good at beginnings and middles. I'm not so good at ends. That's kind of been a trait of me through life, but we're going to get through the end, handkerchiefs at the ready. I want to thank the voters, first of all, who chose to elect me eight times in six contested elections. I gratefully appreciate your confidence, and I always tried to honor that in the work I did. I want to thank all the people who, you know, actively supported my campaigns, literally hundreds of people over 24 years, who saw fit to put their name behind me and say that they backed me. This organization is a fabulous organization. Wow. And first, I want to recognize all the volunteers, all the elected officials, all the appointed officials. You know, John, you had mentioned about time that I put in. There's an awful lot of people who put an awful lot of time into serving this community, and they are the principal reason, or one of the principal reasons, that it is the wonderful town that it is. So tip of the hat to everybody who's served on any committee, board, commission, working group, whatever we want to call them. I want to recognize everyone who's drawn a paycheck from the town of Shrewsbury over the last 24 years. We have a great group of dedicated employees who really choose to be public servants. And it's tough being, working in a town hall because people can express their frustrations, whether or not it's about a matter at hand or they're just angry. It's a public building that they can come in and sometimes share thoughts and ideas that they're not really, they shouldn't really be having. And I know that's few and far between, but I want to recognize that our employees stand strong to do the right thing all the time. When I mention employees, I have to mention particularly the people who work in the office of the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager. I know some folks like to say it's the other way around, but they're wrong. It is the office of the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, and that goes back to 1998. And I really hope I haven't neglected anyone. Laura Rogers, Paula Brady, who was very much involved in the care and feeding of this board, followed by Janice McCoy also. Christine Matero fell into that job. Val Clemmie, also in the office, David Snowden, Alex Martinez, Justin Dobson, Christina Ordung, Nick Haas, and now Taylor Galusha, who looks out after us all. I want to acknowledge a former assistant to the town manager, Tom Gregory, another Shrewsbury kid, who worked here, went on to be an assistant manager in Walpole, administrator in Spencer, and is now the big guy in Hudson. Always enjoyed talking with Tom when I would come in on Friday afternoons. And to our present assistant town manager, Kristen Lass, who I had the privilege, I just blundered in on one of those. So when I worked in Princeton, it wasn't my idea, it happened before I got there, but the town hall was closed on Fridays. So I would go in on Friday mornings, and then I would come here for what I would call my professional development time. And I'd sit with Tom for a while, or Mike Hale, or Dan, to really continue to, my continuing education in municipal government. As Mo mentioned, I've served with 13 selectmen, and it's been a privilege to serve with all of them. Everyone was committed to doing what they thought was the right thing for the town. We didn't always agree. Sometimes we didn't agree at all. But, I mean, no one had any selfish agenda. Everyone was doing what they, what they believed to be right. I can't mention any one of the 13 without, you know, not being kind to the other 12, but there is one I do want to acknowledge. Jim McCaffrey, who served for three years, was an excellent finance committee member, finance committee chair, and then during his first term on the Board of Selectmen, got sick and died at the age of 47. Jim was a good friend, and he was an excellent selectman, and I think about him a lot. Wow. I want to mention, Kevin, I mean, we've already spoken a little bit, but it's been great to work with you. You did teach an old dog some new tricks, and that's what this, we never hire people to, you know, we're very proud of what we've done, but we don't feel that that's the only way to do things, and we're always looking for better ways to do things. And to introduce new people into the mix is how we do that. And the board was very well-served to select. Kevin Mizikar is our manager now, five years ago, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to have worked with you. Along the same lines, I owe a great deal to Michael Hale and Dan Magado, who, without knowing it, really changed my pathway. I never contemplated, you know, becoming a public servant, a professional. It just sort of happened. Things, what do they say? You know, it's not what you plan, it's just how it sort of happens. So when it was time to close the business in '08, I suddenly realized, with Mike's strong suggestion, I applied for the town administrator job in Princeton, which I never really anticipated. It was, I honestly, I sort of did it so Mike would leave me alone, because he kept bugging me about it. And were it not for what I learned with this board, I couldn't have succeeded in that job. And if it were not for what I learned here and that job, I couldn't do what I'm doing today. So particularly grateful to both of them. And I mean, honestly, when I ran the nursery, I was in this building probably more than I should have been. I would go for coffee, and, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is almost next door. And sometimes the coffee trip, two or three days a week. It was funny, all of a sudden John was going to get coffee for the help, but it took him an awful long time to get back, because I'd swing through here. And then when I got the Princeton job, the everyday thing kind of went away. So it was religiously, every Friday, I needed to come in and talk to Dan, particularly talk to Mike. And I told my board, my board in Princeton was very kind, they allowed me to keep running because if they told me not to, I wouldn't have. And I told them in all honesty, and they, they believed me, and it was true, that the best, I wasn't going to go get an MPA at my age then or now, that the best professional development I could have to be a town administrator was to be a selectman in the town of Shrewsbury. And that though I could, I know I could call somebody down here at any time to ask a question, it's altogether different. You don't ask as many questions as if you're, when you're sitting in the room and you're hearing things and you're learning things organically as it's going on. So I'm, you know, outside of my family, Dan Magado is, has done a great deal for me. Then there's this guy on my right, who I, we graduated high school together. We weren't terribly friendly, we weren't unfriendly, but our wives were very friendly. And my wife Debbie flat-out lied to me before this meeting because she told me she, she's on the library trustees, and she told me she had a library trustee meeting, and I believed her. And I, even just before I left, I said, you're not, you're not misleading me. I used another word. And she told me I wasn't. And my sister, Robyn, is here as well, and that's, that's a great surprise also. Our kids are otherwise engaged with their kids or the world we're in, they have some issues that prevent them from being in this room right now. But in 1994, in Spags parking lot, we had three little kids then, and they were drinking a ton of milk, so I was going to Spags probably twice a week for two gallons of milk, because it was the cheapest milk in town, Lundgren and Genitis Milk. And I met Mo in the parking lot, and Mo was a new selectman, he'd only been a selectman for a year or two. And he said, hey, you want to be on this, you know, we got this vacancy on the ZBA. You want to, you should apply. We talked about it a little bit, and I applied. They didn't appoint me. So...
It's because of me.
With the, with the fire that then burned from that rejection, I pursued another opening in the ZBA a couple of years later. And then, actually, I was sitting in this room with my son. Selectman Polito had already announced that she wasn't running for reelection, but I was sitting in this room with my son for his Boy Scout badge for citizenship in the community when Selectman O'Connor announced that she wasn't going to run for reelection. And I was no fool, seeing that there were two open seats. I went home that night and started making calls that I intended to run. But besides, I mean, that's not all, so Mo, Mo was my first chair, Beth, and Mo looked out for Tom and me, very much so. We tried to do something with zoning that a lot of people didn't like, and in this room, Mo protected Tom and me like a, I don't know, like a mother bear to her cubs when the conversation got a little bit out of, out of line. We approached this job very, very differently, but in some ways, I think that that's really good. We are almost like brothers, and we all know what that means. You love your brother, but sometimes, but we, I think we provided each other with a great deal of perspective and a different point of view that we both, we both respected each other's point of view. So it's been great serving with you. I did, I mentioned, I don't think you heard it before the meeting, I did always wonder maybe you'd go before me, and I'd see what that would be like, but I should have known better. So continued success, and you remain a very vital member of the board. My family, as my, our kids, I mean, they lived through this from when they were little, and there is a lot of sacrifice. You miss things. You don't get to go to your kids' stuff sometimes because of this. Debbie's been a rock. I worked with my sister, Robyn, at our family business, and even being a selectman sometimes required you to take off some time from work, and I appreciate that. And I do, I just feel I got to mention, our dad was a selectman. He was wise enough to only serve for two terms. He served from '75 to '81. And actually, our uncle served as a elected Board of Health member back in the days when the Board of Health was elected, and now Debbie's a library trustee. So we're committed to this town, and were it not for my family, I couldn't have done this. So as I start to wrap this up, several mentions have been made that I'm a fiscal conservative. Yeah, I am. I mean, I don't like to spend money unless we have to, but being a fiscal conservative doesn't mean you don't spend money. It means you try not to spend money in a dumb fashion. And when you identify that there's something that needs to be done for the benefit of the community that makes sense, then you just try to figure out the most cost-effective way to do it. So, I mean, I'm proud to be a fiscal conservative, but I'm not a naysayer. We did a lot for, you know, for a fiscal conservative, we managed to do a lot of projects and spend a lot of money, but generally, they were on time and on budget and I think in the best interests of the community. In conclusion, I want to say, I've loved being a member of this board. I love this town. Grew up here, was educated here, did business here. My, you know, my dad graduated high school here, our kids graduated high school here. This town has nurtured my family, provided a place to, you know, to live, to do business. I'm forever grateful to it and for the opportunity to try to make it a better place. And this organization, every organization like this is always going to have critics. This board, a board, whoever's on it, the Board of Selectmen, is always going to have critics. Well, you can criticize us all you want. I've been doing this for a while. I was an administrator. I am an insufferable follower of what other towns do, and I'll tell you, a lot of other towns do a lot of really stupid stuff. And, you know, a Board of Selectmen can either be stabilizing or destabilizing. And I've said to several of you first, do no harm, and I really believe that. And I think in my 24 years on this board, it's been a stabilizing factor. And I understand that people don't get it, but that permeates down through the entire organization, through all the employees. To know that the world isn't just going to go crazy tomorrow because some selectman did something, said something, thought something, or actually didn't think something but spoke without thinking, that doesn't happen much, or I can't say it doesn't happen at all, but that's a tribute to this community. And so to the critics, I'm never saying we're perfect, we certainly aren't, but comparatively speaking, we do, this organization, the town of Shrewsbury, does one hell of a good job. And I congratulate you all, and I thank you all. And, Mr. Chairman, I hope we can continue with the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next item on the agenda, and next to Mr. Mizikar, Town Manager's Report, and under Special Reports, COVID-19 Update.
Thank you. Just a couple updates for the board under the Town Manager's Report. Wanted to note that the social worker has started within the Police Department earlier this week, on the 25th, yesterday. They're working a one-to-nine shift, so thanks to the board, thank you to the board for supporting that initiative and getting into this year's budget, and we look for great results. I wanted to acknowledge that the School Department has issued their 2022 John P. Collins Awards for Excellence, and one of those individual, one of the 20 employees that were recognized was as an un- this week, on the twenty-fifth, yesterday. They're working a one-to-nine shift, so thanks to the board, thank you to the board for supporting that initiative and getting into this year's budget, and we look for great results. I wanted to acknowledge that the School Department has issued their 2022 John P. Collins Awards for Excellence, and one of those individual, one of the twenty employees that were recognized was as an unsung hero was Ken Goodwin, who is a custodial supervisor in the Public Buildings Department. So congratulations to Ken and for all the work that he does really behind the scenes in making our public facilities shine as they do day in and day out. That's great recognition for him and well deserved. Wanted to thank all the volunteers who participated in the Shrewsbury Parks and Recreation Department's Town Cleanup Day. There were one hundred and eighty-five participants, helped clean up over forty-five locations in town, and thirty yards of debris was collected. Special thanks to all the residents who helped us organize and complete those tasks. And of course, the Parks and Highway staff who spent the afternoon helping collect the full bags that the residents filled up for us. So that's the end of the Town Manager's Report, and I'll go to the COVID data.
Any questions on Town Manager's Report? None? Okay, please continue.
So again, we're only reporting on a weekly basis, so this is not as through today, but from the period of April fifteenth through April twenty-second, Friday to Friday, there were fifty-four additional cases in the community. That is a slight downtick from the prior weekly reporting period. It is a trend that we continue to monitor as closely as possible, and will continue to bring out to the community on a weekly basis, Friday afternoons. There's no other updates relative to COVID at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Let's go on to the next item under New Business Review and Act on Recommendations for the May twenty-first, 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Mizikar, I guess, any changes? And then we can talk about approach, given that we've seen the warrant a couple times.
Absolutely. So, Board members, before you this evening, we've printed out the full document in a draft form as we're preparing for town meeting that includes all the motions. The one thing that I did want to point out before we get into any questions or other proceedings is that Article forty-three, which is that large transfer of land from tax title purposes over to general municipal purposes, we anticipated the need for a hundred and five parcels of land to be transferred after further due diligence. We've come to a number of a hundred and two parcels of land that we have the highest level of confidence that we need to take action on at this time. So that is a reduction in three, and that's clearly illustrated in the motion. Just while we're on that article, we've also provided some additional summary information that's in this narrative description that will help support the map and, and a spreadsheet that we provided to town meeting members. But the median parcel size is just a little over a tenth of an acre, or just a little less than five thousand square feet, and the median number of years since we foreclosed upon those properties is fifty-five. So obviously, very small parcels that we've had on the books for tax title taking for quite some time. And, you know, really, it's a, it's a housekeeping endeavor at this point. So the board, obviously, was seeking consideration of making recommendations for approval or, or non-passage of articles. Traditionally, in the past, you've, you've considered these in groups for your convenience this evening. So obviously, that's at the discretion of the board, whether you want to chunk them together or call out any articles that you want to set aside and have further discussion on.
So what would our preference be, given that we've seen these warrant articles before? Do we want to take them in groups of five, or do we want to go one at a time? And then if there's any issues in however we bundle them, we could accept that out for further discussion?
I should just note that Moderator Kane is the proponent for Article Two here. If there are any questions that the board may have for him, if that's one article you may want to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Can I jump up for a second?
Please.
Just a couple of things. First of all, Article Two, I think it's a pretty straightforward and clear item to move on from cushions. As I mentioned in a letter to town meeting members, if there's one operative copy and it's in my briefcase, it tends to limit people's ability to get involved. And I think it's important that people know there's nine or ten copies of town meeting time at, in the reference section at the library that was gifted last year with this in anticipation. I would encourage people to get out and take a look at it prior to town meeting. It seems to me that if you're serious about the democratic aspect of a town meeting, everyone should have easy access to the rules, and I think this would effectuate that. I'll save the long-winded blubbiation regarding Erskine May or, or any of the other folks that I had prepared for this evening. Secondly, I just want to mention, and the manager may have, we will have pre-town meeting in person at Oak Middle, because this is the, the year from the census, so we could have a lot of new members. We'd rather do it in a familiar setting and with plenty of room. And then also this year, I think one of the real improvements from the manager's office is that the bundling, which is now something we can simply do, will be in the town meeting package. So it won't be me again trying to get, it'll all be there. It's color-coded. We refined it earlier today, and I'm hoping that members will find it quite handy as we move forward. Having said that, thank you for your time. Enjoy your meeting. And once again, John, congratulations.
Thank you. It's a preference of the board. Do you want to go through each one individually, or do we want to take in groups of five?
Groups of five.
Okay. So Articles one through five, are there any specific articles, articles we would want to push out for a discussion at the end?
Just give me a second, because I need to actually look at them again to remember what they are.
Probably just easier to go, let's go through one at a time.
So the, so Article One, I, I'll go through them, the first five. Article One is to receive a report from the Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee. It's a standing verbal report that will be provided by Chairwoman Fritz. Article Two is the article that the moderator just described with regards to procedures for town meeting. Article Three, we will seek to defeat. Article Four will seek to defeat because there's no actual business that needs to happen for current or prior years. And then Article Five is the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. So just again, Articles three and four would right now recommend defeat.
So not to recommend.
Move we recommend, one, two, and five, and not recommend three and four.
Second. Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Articles six, seven, and eight are traditional articles where we receive funding from particular sources, including the Cable TV Division of Selco, the Electric Division of Selco, and from free cash, all for the purposes of offsetting the tax rate. Article Nine is to move three million dollars into the override stabilization account in accordance and actually much more robust than we had originally planned a year ago whenever we proposed, the board proposed the operational override to the community that was successful. And Article Ten is the General Capital Improvement Plan for Non-Utility Purposes.
Any issues with taking them, or bundling them? Okay.
Move we recommend Articles six through ten.
Second. Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Article eleven.
Article eleven is the two-point-six-million-dollar operating budget for solid waste collection program. Article twelve is the six-point-seven-million-dollar operating budget for the sewer system. Article thirteen is a two-point-five-million-dollar capital investment for the sewer system. Article fourteen is a two-point-nine-million-dollar operating budget for the Water Department, and fifteen is a one-point-four-million-dollar budget for capital improvements for the water system.
Any of these warrant articles that want to be taken out for discussion later? No.
Move we recommend Articles eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article sixteen.
Article sixteen is a one-point-two-million-dollar operating budget for stormwater services. Article seventeen is a four-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar capital improvement plan for the stormwater services utility. Article eighteen is seeking four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars in free cash and, excuse me, four-hundred-ninety, yeah, four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars in free cash, and seeks borrowing authorization for four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars for the completion of an accelerated, accelerated repair program at the Oak Middle School to replace doors and windows. We never intend to actually have to borrow those funds, but MSBA will be providing a grant, but we are required at the local level to show a full appropriation for the total project cost. Article nineteen is a traditional article where we pay the out-of-pocket medical expenses of retired and disabled police officers and firefighters. That's six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. And Article twenty is to transfer twenty-thousand dollars from free cash into the insurance trust fund, which is used to pay deductibles throughout the course of the year.
Anyone want to take any of these articles at the end of discussion? No? Okay.
Move we recommend Articles sixteen through twenty.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article twenty-one, please.
Twenty-one is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer from free cash to the general stabilization account. Article twenty-two is a three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-and-twenty-seven-dollar appropriation for the Cable Television Access Program that's run by SMC. This does include a twelve-thousand-dollar taxation, appropriation from taxation as well to offset the cost of producing public meetings. Article twenty-three is to set the annual spending limits for revolving accounts, which is a traditional article. Article twenty-four is to accept any funding that comes, becomes available to the town from the Commonwealth for Chapter Ninety, which we use for roadway repair and improvement projects. And Article twenty-five is a traditional transfer of eighteen-thousand dollars from the sale of cemetery lots to perpetual care.
Does anyone want to take any of those articles out from bundling? No? Okay.
Move we recommend Articles twenty-one through twenty-five.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article twenty-six, please.
The transfer of thirty-thousand dollars from free cash to fund the management of lakes, ponds, and waterways within the town. This is a broader scope than prior years where funding was just allocated for the Lake Quinsigaman Association, but of the same purpose. Article twenty-seven is the transfer of a hun, a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in free cash to fund a climate action and resiliency plan, which we discussed at the last meeting. Article twenty-eight is the transfer of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars from free cash to fund the development, implementation, and of recommendations of a town center comprehensive transportation and multimodal study. Article twenty-nine is the town's first transfer of Community Preservation Act funding that was received in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. And Article thirty is the beginning of a set of zoning bylaw adjustments in this, which have been fully detailed at prior meetings.
Anyone want to take any of those articles out from bundling?
Just would like.
Oh, this is the last.
Just to note for the board, the planning board, and Mr. Cahill is here, the planning board will be reviewing these articles at their May meeting and voting on their recommendations, so you may want to hold off on Article thirty through thirty-five with a recommendation. And if there are any questions with the board members on thirty through thirty-five, Mr. Cahill is here to answer them.
So we'll bundle twenty-six through twenty-nine. Okay. Thank you.
Move approval of Articles twenty-six through twenty-nine.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll go, want to continue, but we won't recommend any?
All right, we'll go to Article thirty-six.
Article thirty-six, we'll take up whether to recommend after. Okay.
Article thirty-six is to amend the general bylaws, inserting a new section called the Town of Shrewsbury Tree Bylaw, which provides for governance over the management of public trees within the community. Article thirty-seven is to accept provisions of Chapter Sixty, Section Three D, which is to establish a special fund for elderly and disabled tax relief. Article thirty-eight is to accept provisions of Fifty-nine, five, C and a half, which is to increase the exemption by a hundred percent for which taxpayer, any exemption with taxpayer qualified is a taxpayer relief item. Article thirty-nine is a taxpayer relief item to set the, revise the asset and income limits upwards to allow for greater tax relief within the community. Article forty is to accept Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five E, to, for the Board of Assessors to annually increase the asset limits applied to statutory exemptions. It's also a tax relief initiative.
Any articles want to be taken out from bundling? If not, take a motion to recommend.
Move approval Articles thirty-six through forty.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article forty-one, please.
Article forty-one is a request through the Retirement Board to increase the, a part of anyone's, any pensioner of the Town of Shrewsbury, the base which a cost of living adjustment is applied annually from twelve-thousand dollars, the first twelve-thousand dollars to the first fourteen-thousand dollars. So individuals may not know, but the full pension of an individual is not subject to a COLA, only the first twelve-thousand. We would look to move that to fourteen-thousand. The maximum allowed under the general laws is eighteen-thousand, and sixty percent of communities that are at least at fourteen-thousand or above. Article forty-two is also an adjustment to the retirement system to increase the pensions of retirees for acci, who are retired for accidental disability, to fifty percent of the current salary from the position which they retired. There are currently twelve retirees that would be eligible. That would increase, that cost increase would be fifty-thousand dollars annually. This just provides for a, a living benefit for those disabledly retired from their service to the town. Article forty-three would be to transfer a hundred and two parcels of land from the tax title custodian, which I previously went over. Article forty-four would be for consideration of town meeting to allow for the disposition of Thirty-three Eaton Ave., Twelve Cedar Road, Twenty-five Harvard Ave., and Two-Ten North Quinsigaman Avenue. Allow for the Board of Selectmen to dispose of that upon terms that they deem appropriate at the benefit of the town. And Article forty-five is to accept two new public ways of Lake Street and Commerce Road. A portion of Lake Street and Commerce Road.
Any one to discuss Articles forty-one or forty-five, or comfortable bundling?
I had, I had a point that I wanted to ask on Article forty-four. Mr. Mizikar, could you explain what our plans are to ensure that we get the fair value for these properties?
Sure. So we will rely upon, depending on parcel-by-parcel basis, some of these have encroachments upon them, and where necessarily we could seek an appraisal of the property, or rely upon what the general laws provide, which is the assessed value. And everyone knows that the assessed value, or folks may not know, but the assessed value of any property in town has to be assessed at at least ninety percent of the full fair market value, so they're considered and adjusted each and every year that they need to be based upon open or vacant lot sales. And finally, all these will be disposed of on a competitive basis, meaning that we will not, we don't have the luxury of a, of being a local government of just entering into a kind of what would be a private sales transaction. There has to be competitiveness, which means it has to be either offered to multiple butters or disposed of through a sealed bid process. So the process will first, the property value will first be assessed through an appraisal or assessed value, and then it will be disposed of in a competitive manner so we can ensure we receive the appropriate value for the property prior to disposal. These properties will also be restricted in the future, so they cannot be, you know, flipped back over. They'll be combined with any lots that, if there isn't a butter that wins them, and further indeed restricted from separation or extraordinary development in the future, so.
Okay. If I could just ask another question. So you would have to, we would have to spend money on an appraisal, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then how close is an appraisal usually to an assessed value?
Well, again, our assessed values are, under state law, have to be at least ninety percent of market value. The state comes in and audits us every five years to ensure that we are managing that on a year-by-year basis, and we do that through a mass appraisal system. So when vacant, for these lots which are vacant, when vacant sales of properties occur, we have to adjust these values upward to reflect that. So again, you know, we'd be spending a couple thousand dollars per parcel to, you know, really probably only adjust it by, you know, a few thousand dollars, so there's probably not a high value, since these are such small lots and very, we're going to heavily restrict what they can be used for in the future.
Okay. And if I could continue on?
Go ahead.
So it's my understanding that the purpose of this article is for both the town and the residents to avoid having to engage in like a legal fight in order to rectify the situation. So the end goal isn't for the town to make top dollar for the parcels, it's to come to an agreement with residents without having to... It's to come to an agreement with residents without having to spend either taxpayer dollars or residents having to spend their money on legal fees.
Right.
And when you say encroachments, we're talking about like driveways.
Correct.
Not things that are easily moved.
Right.
So there's a willingness on the part of the residents to acquire this land if they do so, going through the appropriate process of purchasing it. And then there's also us as a town looking for an amicable way to solve this, because obviously we're not trying to make life difficult for the residents. We're just trying to maintain control over town on land or sell it as appropriate.
That is true. Thirty-three Eaton Ave. and two-ten North Quinzigman have encroachments, both have driveways upon them. And, you know, without, you know, really getting into the full details, we've had very thorough conversations about the, those who were encroached and what the ramifications would be of not trying to find an amicable solution to the disposition of these properties. And we believe it's in the best interest of the town fiscally to pursue these options where we dispose of them in a competitive way rather than take an arduous legal position against the encroachment.
So we're not receiving any tax dollars for these properties right now?
Currently, we're not.
And by going through this process, we would be then receiving tax dollars for this property?
As soon as they're sold, right, yep.
So I can see where this is in the best interest of the residents. Thank you very much.
Any, thank you. Anything else on forty-one through forty-five?
Move approval of Articles forty-one through forty-five.
Second.
They're moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero to recommend. Forty-six, please.
Forty-six is a petition for special legislature, an act changing the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Shrewsbury to a select board. This would require approval of town meeting and then ratification for changes relative to the Acts of nineteen fifty-three, which is the Town Manager Act, the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager Act, and our local bylaws. And Article forty-seven is a standing article that appoints the trustees of the Wright &amp; Harlow Charitable Trust. Article forty-eight is authorizing the Board of Selectmen as the authority to enter into any amendments to intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Westboro. It's for sewer treatment plant operations, which was originally struck in nineteen seventy-nine when town meeting had the authority for IMAs.
Any questions on Articles forty-six through forty-eight?
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to do it, but I'd like to hold forty-six.
Okay. Hold forty-six.
And I move we recommend approval of Articles forty-seven and forty-eight.
Second.
They're moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Go back to Article forty-six.
I don't, I didn't really mean this to be my last thing, and I, maybe it won't be. Look, I get it that many people think the term "selectmen" is, is not reflective of how society names positions. I have absolutely no issue with changing the name. I want to be real, I know I'm gonna, that nobody's gonna, that message isn't gonna necessarily be heard, but the English language is a beautiful language. I just don't find "select board," "a select person" a very elegant language. I find it very clumsy. Unfortunately, it's unlike, a fireman became a firefighter, a policeman became a police officer, a mailman became a letter carrier. Aldermen either become city councilors or actually they're alders now, Board of Alders. We heard at our last meeting that what seems to be the most logical and good use of the English language, town council, can only be used by a city, which is just absolutely ridiculous. So I am not interested in making the motion to recommend. I fully acknowledge the fact that that motion will likely be made and voted on, and I intend to abstain from that vote to recommend. I should think the towns of Massachusetts should petition their various legislators to change the situation so that a Board of Selectmen could become a town council. However, I fully acknowledge that that is very much likely a minority opinion. Thank you.
Sure. Any comments? Questions? Mr. DePaul.
I, I, I agree with what you said, sorry. Executive Board or Town Council, this makes more sense. I think it's clumsy, but...
Go see what town meeting says.
I don't have a problem going gender neutral. I just think that's a clumsy way to do it. But it's what we got, right?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mizzikar, did you, is this by petition? Or did I miss here?
No, I said we'd have to petition the general court.
Okay, right, okay, thank you.
Any comments? So we, and just to summarize, we did look at town council, executive board, municipal, town council, and even tried executive board, but the AG's office said, "Do it at your peril." So that's, this was...
Do it at your peril?
Yep. Which wasn't a good...
Would've made it exciting.
Put it in place and then have everything undone. Wasn't recommended, so that's just to summarize.
You know what I do, I, you're not going to believe it, but I find it interesting that they say you can't use town council or executive board because it refers back to the law every place that it says "selectmen," but you're changing the wording to "select board," but that's okay. So I just think it's bizarre. I think that, you know, city councils and all that are great, because you don't have to deal with the issue. I just, the issue of the name. I mean, we went through and did all our policies and made them gender neutral when we did them over a few years ago. It's just a clumsy name. People ask you what you're going to be called, nobody even knows.
I'm good.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we recommend Article forty-six.
So they're second.
Second.
They're moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
I think I'm abstaining, because I really don't have a...
Abstain.
Two abstentions, three ayes. Okay. So recommended, three zero with two abstentions.
I should note that I don't have strong feelings about it either way, but I'm not opposed to it.
What?
I said I don't have strong feelings about it either way, but I'm not opposed to the change.
No, not either. Just whatever town meeting says is fine.
Okay, so that covers the, all forty-eight articles, well, except for the ones that we've not taken action on today until we hear. Okay, thank you. Next item is under New Business to Review an Act in the Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Two Town Managers Evaluation. So as part of the process, in accordance with open meeting law requirements, Taylor Galusha, Principal Department Assistant, has received individual reviews from each board member and has developed a composite review based on the data and commentary submitted. Each factor was rated from zero, unsatisfactory, to four, exceptional, outstanding. And summary of the comments and score data are explained in the attached, which I received shortly before the meeting and will go through right now. So in total, there are eleven factors. There's then a twelfth quasi-factor, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two goals. And then summary, and I will read each category, the score, the average score per category, and just highlight some of the comments under each category, so I'll try to keep it brief. So under Factor One, Knowledge. The Guiding Questions demonstrates thorough knowledge and understanding of finances, policies, procedures, processes, resolutions, state and federal laws and regulations, and town operations. Keeps abreast of critical trends, practices, and conditions inside and outside of the organization. Demonstrates commitment to continuously enhancing professional knowledge and capability. Does professional reading and research, attends seminars and conferences, and actively participates in professional development opportunities. Some, some of the feedback. Mr. Mizzikar is incredibly knowledgeable and always seems to be in tune with the latest best practices. It is clear from the goals developed for this year that Mr. Mizzikar is an exemplary leader who seeks out ways to improve every day. His work demonstrates a superior knowledge of budgeting and long-range financial planning. Mr. Mizzikar seeks to learn and apply best practices and approaches change in careful consideration. His knowledge base is both wide and deep, which supports his ability to manage the organization effectively and react to opportunities and threats. His financial acumen and knowledge continue to benefit the town's financial position and taxpayers directly. For the category of knowledge, he received four fours and a three, and an average for this category was three point eight. Next category is productivity. Productivity, the Guiding Questions ensures that program services and projects provide results that matter to the town cost-effectively and within budget. Effectively uses both qualitative and quantitative measures to manage performance and ensures that prudent financial management is maintained for the continued success of the town. Some of the feedback included the following. He is always looking for ways to position the town well financially and proactive about improving the services provided to residents. He completes tasks in a timely manner and is quick to notify the board if an unexpected timeline will not be met. His goals for the year are illustrative of his high level of productivity, and he does not set easily attained goals for himself. Mr. Mizzikar has provided the support and leadership to facilitate a high level of performance throughout the organization, particularly in town hall. I find that Mr. Mizzikar is practical and prioritizes his time and work effectively. Under Mr. Mizzikar's leadership, a very high level of municipal service is delivered at reasonable costs. And in fiscal twenty-twenty-two, the town continued to provide high-quality services despite the continuing challenges from the coronavirus pandemic. And the town continues to reap the benefits of the town manager's modernization of the overall organization. For Factor Two, Productivity. Mr. Mizzikar received two fours, one three-point-five, and two threes for a composite of three-point-five, which is between exceeds expectations and exceptional outstanding. Next Factor Three, Decision Making. Guiding Questions identifies and evaluates alternative courses of action, makes timely and relevant suggestions to solve problems, consults with affected parties when making critical decisions, makes sound decisions in a timely manner, and analyzes situations to determine root causes and develops realistic alternative solutions. Some feedback includes the following. He has good instincts and involves others in the decision-making process, which is so important to creating a culture where everyone in the organization feels valued. Mr. Mizzikar does not shy away from difficult decisions and rarely comes to the board with a problem without already having a solution in mind, mind, excuse me. Mr. Mizzikar excels at looking forward and anticipating and planning for the future. His decision and recommendations address not only the immediate future, but the longer term. He possesses excellent listening skills that are evident as he moves through the decision-making process. He consistently brings forward proposed solutions when presenting an issue or challenge. He carefully and calmly analyzes situations, considers options, selects the best path forward, and leads the organization to effectively implement. Mr. Mizzikar is a calm and confident decision-maker. He continues to tackle challenging problems using a collaborative approach, looks to build consensus, and consistently makes effective and well-reasoned decisions based on sound business judgment. Under Factor Three, Decision Making, he received four fours and one three for a composite score of three-point-eight. Next item under Factor Four, Oral Communications. Guiding Questions listens attentively and effectively, speaks logically, clearly, and concisely, and encourages and uses feedback. Some of the comments include the following. Mr. Mizzikar has a way of making complicated topics easier to understand. His ability to communicate well to a variety of audiences is a strength. It is important to note that Mr. Mizzikar is also an attentive listener who hears the thoughts of others and is open to feedback. Mr. Mizzikar delivers clear and concise thoughts, presentations that distill complex items into understandable terms. In addition, he has a strong command of the subject matter and can delve more deeply in a manner when required while still communicating on complex topics in understandable terms. He is always concise and on point. Mr. Mizzikar clearly explains even the most difficult subject matters so that it can easily be understood by everyone. Not only is he an effective communicator, but also an attentive listener who encourages and uses feedback from the board, members of his organization, and the community as part of the decision-making process. Under Factor Four, Oral Communications, he received three fours, a three-point-five, and a three for a composite score of three-point-seven. So that is between exceeds expectation and exceptional outstanding, but leaning towards exceptional outstanding. Factor Five, Written Communications. Practices timely and effective communication with Board of Selectmen and department heads regarding issues and concerns of the town. Makes logical and well-organized presentations. Some of the comments include, similar to his oral communication skills, Mr. Mizzikar writes well-written communications. His writings are concise and demonstrate a clear and well-reasoned logic. His written communication is consistently clear. Mr. Mizzikar writes clearly and concisely. He timely communicates pertinent issues and concerns of the town to the board. Under Factor Five, Written Communication, he received two fours and three threes for a score of three-point-four. Factor Six, Financial Administration. Establishes and effectively uses appropriate mechanisms to anticipate trends and opportunities. Develops and implements alternative strategies for dealing with change and planning for the future and uses creative and innovative problem-solving strategies for adapting to uncertainties and complexities. Some of the comments include the following. I applaud Mr. Mizzikar for developing a vision for financial operations and advocating for the necessary staff to achieve these goals. The budget document this year is exceptional. It is probably the best that I can recall as far as ease of use and ability to be accessed, to be assessed completely online. Mr. Mizzikar is supported by his staff in the creation of the budget book, and I see this as an example of how we empower staff to take on larger roles and grow professionally. One need not look beyond Mr. Mizzikar's budgets, long-range financial planning, and financial analysis to see that he demonstrates a clear mastery of the financial aspects of managing a large organization. His respect for Shrewsbury's fiscal position and taxpayer funding is recognized and appreciated. Mr. Mizzikar is extremely skilled in municipal finance and possesses an excellent, excellent business sense. The town continues to seek ways in which to improve communication and be more transparent with town residents. For example, the fiscal year twenty-three budget book has been transitioned to a digital format for all residents to access with easier-to-read charts and graphs to show how taxpayer funds are utilized. Under Factor Six, he has received five fours for a composite score of four, so that's exceptional outstanding. Factor Seven, Leadership. Sets an effective example of high personal standards and integrity with a drive and energy to achieve established goals, inspires trust and confidence with staff and Board of Selectmen, and functions as an effective member of a work group, gaining respect and cooperation from others. Some of the feedback is as follows. Leadership is the art of getting someone else to do something you want done because he wants to do it. The quote from Dwight Eisenhower makes, from one of the board members, makes me think of Mr. Mizzikar's leadership style and success. The past five years have been transformative for town operations due to the exceptional leadership skills of Mr. Mizzikar. He is well-respected by his employees. I think Mr. Mizzikar is an exceptional leader. He leverages staff and instills trust and confidence in them to perform. He leads by example and integrity. Mr. Mizzikar leads with a quiet confidence that sets a very positive tone within the organization and to the public. His leadership style is very nuanced. He knows when to push, when to pull, and when to pause. He has consistently demonstrated commitment to hard work, integrity, and ethics, and encourages others to do the same. He is forward-thinking, fiscally responsible, and always focused on the best interests of our community and his staff. Driven by excellence and to be an excellent public servant, he has a clear vision for a world-class municipal operation, a community that will enable all to thrive. Under Factor Seven, Leadership, he has received five fours for a composite score of four-point-zero, exceptional outstanding. Factor Eight, Public Relations. Guiding Questions effectively represents the town in public as it respects peers in local, state, and national government, values people and recognizes their contributions, seeks information from other governments that may assist the town in determining if a potential synergy is available to make Shrewsbury Services more effective and efficient. Some of the comments are as follows. Another example of Mr. Mizzikar's responsiveness to residents' concerns can be seen through the Climate Action Plan that will be funded through an article at the annual town meeting. Mr. Mizzikar is always open to hearing what residents have to say and working to implement their ideas if they will benefit the town. He reaches out to others in municipal and state governments, both to learn about a topic and to collaborate with our neighboring towns in City of Worcester on topics of mutual interest. Is respectful of residents and their viewpoints and appears genuinely to appreciate opportunities to hear from residents and other stakeholders. As previously mentioned, he is always willing to meet with members of the community to listen and to incorporate com- listen and to incorporate communities' ideas into the fabric of the town's operations. That is what he did recently when he met with a group of concerned town residents about climate matters and worked together to bring forward a warrant article for Climate Action Plan. Under factor eight, right, yes, public relations, he received five threes, a composite score of three. Exceptional, excuse me, exceeds expectations. Factor nine, work relationships. Guiding questions allows sufficient lead time to planned presentation of requests, programs, and policies to the Board of Selectmen, provides information and education on issues as appropriate, effectively implements the board's policies, procedures, and philosophy in areas of assignment, seeks ways to cooperate, collaborate, or consolidate programs as appropriate, and seeks information from other governments that may assist the town in providing services within, without, excuse me, need to redevelop them. Some comments are as follows. Mr. Mizikar has a strong working relationship with staff at all levels, treats employees at all levels with respect that recognizes each person's contribution as important to the overall success of the organization. We also benefit from the strong professional relationship Mr. Mizikar has with school administration and Selco. Mr. Mizikar enjoys a good working relationship with both his peers, the board, and his staff. He is willing to both learn from and educate others in furtherance of common goals. Mr. Mizikar interacts well with all levels of town staff. He applies the same expectations to himself that he has for the team. Mr. Mizikar maintains strong relationships throughout the organization, sets high standards, and has established a collaborative and professional work environment within our town government. He trusts his team and empowers them to do their job. Under factor nine, work relationships, three fours and two threes for a composite score of 3.6. Factor 10, staff development and training. Guiding questions demonstrates continued professional education and development importance, allows and recommends attendance at professional meetings, seminars, and conferences, maintains and recommends membership in state and national professional organizations. Some comments include the following. Mr. Mizikar sees the value of staff development and has utilized John Wortman to help in this area. From what I can tell, Mr. Mizikar puts a lot of his own time in developing staff. He has invested in their success in grooming them for greater responsibility within the organization. The value of the manager's approach to education, funding, and encouragement for the staff members' personal and professional growth cannot be overstated. Mr. Mizikar successfully implemented and continues to evolve the staff feedback and performance review process. He has demonstrated commitment to developing others and supporting their career ambitions. He is a strong believer in the value of training and education and has provided that for that in his budget requests. Mr. Mizikar understands that success depends upon the continuous development of all town staff, including himself, as a champion of empowering his team and his team's development. Factor 10, staff development and training, two fours and three threes for a composite score of 3.4. Under factor 11, personnel practices. Guiding questions handles conflict and initiates cooperation between employees, boards, commissions, et cetera, in a professional manner, establishes fair employee policies and procedures, and enforces them equally and impartially. Some comments include the following. Although we have a strong human resources department, Mr. Mizikar is still directly involved with personnel. Let's see, while there have been many retirements of long-serving staff, there is not a high volume of employee turnover. Mr. Mizikar makes his staff feel valued, and it shows. Mr. Mizikar enjoys good employee relations. His multi-year approach to reorganize and restructure Shrewsbury's municipal departments has enhanced our operations and level of services to residents, and he's led efforts to expand and improve the HR element of the organization. Mr. Mizikar and his team have established a rigorous collaborative and successful hiring process. As a result, Shrewsbury continues to be a highly sought-after community to work and attract professionals from throughout the Commonwealth. Factor 11, personnel practices, three fours and two threes for a 3.6. Under item 12, or factor 12, or factor fiscal year 22, goal evaluations. Guiding questions handles conflict and initiates cooperation between employees, boards, commissions, et cetera, in a professional manner, and establishes fair employee policies and procedures and enforces them equally and impartially. Some comments include the following. Mr. Mizikar's goals are robust and will continue to bring us closer to the vision he created for town operations when he joined us five years ago. I like that many of the goals are multi-year because it shows a long-term approach rather than focusing on short-term gains. Generally, I believe that much progress has been made on the goals. Mr. Mizikar is goal-driven. In addition to successfully adhering to and achieving written goals, he continuously works to advance our town government and services in Shrewsbury on a daily basis. His ability to be fluid and pivot as needed is an asset. Though flexible enough to adjust to circumstances as they appear, Mr. Mizikar establishes thoughtful, implementable goals and works to achieve them throughout his daily work. Under personal goals, excuse me, fiscal 22 goals, three fours and two threes for a score of 3.6. Summary. Guiding questions. What would you identify as the manager's strengths expressed in terms of the principled results achieved during this rating period? What performance areas would you identify as most critical for improvement? What constructive suggestions or assistance can you offer the manager to enhance performance? What other comments do you have for the manager regarding priorities, expectations, goals, or objectives for the new rating period? Comments are as follows. We are extremely fortunate to have Mr. Mizikar in Shrewsbury, and I enjoy working with him in my role as selectman. He is forward-thinking and always looking for ways to innovate and improve. He is not satisfied with the status quo and is helping the organization to move beyond doing things the way we always have. Mr. Mizikar has substantially built the organizational structure to build a capacity to address the evolving needs and expectations of the community. He recognizes the need to invest in the professional development of the management team to ensure that has the skill sets required to be efficiently and effectively in the 21st century. He has successfully led major organizational change through clearly articulating his goals, communicating the benefits to both the town and the staff, and supporting his team. Overall, a job well done. Shrewsbury 2030 Strategic Plan is a glowing example of his leadership and initiative, as well as for his desire for continuous improvement, resident engagement, and stakeholder value. I am continuously impressed with how he conducts himself and how he engages with others. He is both respectful and respected. I am confident and excited for our prospects under Mr. Mizikar's leadership and how he positions us for continued success. It has been a tremendous pleasure to work with him through his first five years and watch him grow in effectiveness. Mr. Mizikar continues to serve as an exemplary role model for Shrewsbury, and he has continued to provide extraordinary leadership during the pandemic. He is open-minded and inclusive. Changing nature of our town requires individuals like him who can recognize the needs of our diversity and balance the concerns and hopes so that all can thrive. He is always willing to meet with members of the community, to listen and to incorporate community members' ideas into the fabric of the town's operations. Under the summary, he received three fours, a 3.5, and a three for an overall composite score of 3.7, and his average overall with the categories for all 12 categories plus summary is a 3.6. That is Mr. Mizikar's evaluation. Any questions or comments?
Nothing beyond this?
Yeah, it was pretty comprehensive, but anything?
I mean, you hit the highlights, obviously. I was planning to just speak to my summary, but you also did that, so.
I did as quickly as I could.
I kind of want to give Taylor, thank you for putting it together into this book because it is really very helpful to go in and be able to see all of the different things here that we wrote and shared. And I mean, we all agree. I think that's kind of the takeaway. When I look through this, we all have very similar takes on the performance of the manager, and I think we're all extremely pleased with the work that he does for the community. And we all feel really grateful to be working with him.
I agree. Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, I just appreciate the support of the board. Appreciate the frank conversations that we have. I know a lot of people don't get to experience what I do, and we roll up our sleeves and have good conversations, and it's enriching and enjoying and truly a pleasure to work for the town, and thanks for your continued support.
Yeah, the one thing I also want to say is just your availability, that you're always ready, willing, and able to answer a question. I probably didn't highlight that enough throughout reading these as quickly as I could in the short time I had before this, but no question to silly. You are constantly educating us, making us better, making our community better, always available to provide feedback, to provide advice, and that's very much appreciated. And the openness and the transparent nature in which you operate permeates throughout the organization, so a very, job very well done. Any other comments or questions?
John, just to the process that we go through, that each one of us received this separately, like, and we didn't see this compiled version, even you didn't, until we walked in here this evening. So it's not like we discuss it or talk to each other about it. It's all done independently, and it's all organized through Taylor.
Yeah, I got it 20 minutes before, and as I mentioned, it's a speed read to go through it and get the highlights as quickly as I can, and probably didn't do it justice with the glowing comments that you received. So it was a very good year for you, and you continue to bring us forward as we continue to live in a changing world, and we're changing to meet our residents' expectations.
I would just say that I think that, you know, there's a lot of fours, and some people would argue that four doesn't leave room for growth, but, you know, I personally noted that I disagree with that. I think that it, you have a growth mindset, and you're always looking to improve, so I think you deserve the recognition for the performance that you have. I think that, I'm glad you sort of brought up the point of Kevin when you interact with us, because I don't think anyone would say that we go easy on you. And I know that some people will watch this and maybe criticize us that we're being a little too complimentary of you, but we challenge you on a daily basis. You challenge us on a daily basis. And like I said, I think I go into this sometimes looking at how things could be, how wrong they could be, how bad they could be, and it makes me even more grateful for the position that we're in.
Just one thought.
Sure.
I like it when I can talk with somebody or work with somebody that I can learn something from. When I walk away, I felt like I learned something, and it's one of the things I enjoy about working with you, Mr. Mizikar, because I feel that after almost every meeting, I walked away with something new that I didn't know I learned, something valuable. And I think it's great that, I think you learn some stuff from us, but I think it's also good that we learn stuff from you, and I think that's the part of what makes the board function and work with the managers so well, so I compliment you on that.
Thank you. Okay, any, Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, above and beyond what's in this very comprehensive evaluation, I think it comes down to trust. The board trusts you, and truthfully, that's in many ways the most important quality of all. Sometimes, as much as we are the policy-setting board, we don't sit in this building 40-plus hours a week, and the board needs to have someone with whom they are comfortable with and confident in and trusting of, and that's what I think we have here.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Move we approve and accept the manager's evaluation for fiscal year 2022.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is review and act on employment agreement for the town manager from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. So, consistent with prior tradition of this board, Mr. Mizikar has one year left on his existing contract, and to primary purpose of providing stability, rather than going to the final year, particularly given the glowing review that he just had and the high level of performance that he's provided, as the board has done in the past, we have negotiated an employment agreement that would cover the three-year period commencing July 1st, 2023, from June 30th, 2026. There are only a few subtle changes to the current agreement that I want to talk through. They relate to the following. One is just a minor request that should the town manager desire to teach a course during the evening that would provide indirect benefits to the community, and it wouldn't provide a conflict of interest, that's something that would be entertained, provided that be no more than 20 hours in a month. So that's a small change from the previous agreement. Couple other changes relate to, two financial changes, a small change in reimbursement from $400 to $500 a month, so that's $1,200 in a year, and then deferred compensation an additional amount of $5,000 per year starting in fiscal year 24. So we're talking from a cash standpoint, it's about $6,200 of benefits now. This was benchmarked against other communities. This is two years out as well. It does not start this coming year, and that is what has informed this contract. But other than that, the, there's nothing about base, it's just carrying forward from the existing agreement, as well as the other substantive terms generally carried forth. So that's the material changes. Any questions or comments, or if I've missed anything, let me know.
Please.
Mr. DePaolo.
I think it's an appropriate contract. I think the amounts are appropriate, and I think we need to be aware of what's happening in the market and keep the manager's position competitive with, like, communities. We, in the past, distant past, we weren't as aggressive as keeping up, and I think we're trying to correct that, that, particularly when you have somebody who's doing a good job, you want to make sure that they feel that they'd be treated well also, and I think it's important that we keep that pay level competitive with the market, and it changes rapidly. And so I'm glad we took a look at it, and I'm glad you had brought that up when we started talking about this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
A move we sign the employment agreement with Kevin Mizikar as town manager through, from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026.
Second. Have been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar, and thank you for additional three years. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to appoint a representative to the Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee. Mr. LeBeau had served that admirably after Mr. Kane had left the Board of Selectmen, but Mr. LeBeau tendered his resignation, I think technically today, after the meeting, or after the meeting?
6:59 this evening.
Okay, so now we need to appoint a replacement.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Mrs. Casavan.
How much more work do they have to do?
From what I heard, it's not much.
Administrative, right?
Yeah, we're just, I mean, we probably have two or three more meetings that will end in the October to December timeframe, just with closeout with MSBA and audits and stuff.
Given that, there's not much work for the committee to do, do you feel we need to put a replacement in for two or three months?
Well, it's more than, I think it would be appropriate to have a board member sitting there as we do the final audit and closeout for the board.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't thinking of it that way, okay.
Mrs. Casavan.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I just, I can't help but say, I seem to remember a certain selectman that shall remain nameless who insisted that a selectman be allowed to serve on building committees.
Well, you know what, I wasn't, I was, you're right. I remember that town meeting well. I wasn't thinking of that. I was just thinking of the number of members, so yeah, I think you're right. Sorry, thank you. See, this is what I'm gonna miss.
Mrs. Casavan.
I'd be happy to serve for the remaining meetings.
Great.
We nominate Dr. Casavan to serve on the Beale Building Committee.
Second.
Have been moved, anyone else? Okay, have been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being willing to serve on that. Next item is to review and act to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2021 of the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. As written, we have a memo in our file related to this. Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Second. Have been moved second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 11 is to review and act to sign a letter of support for the 2022 Municipal Vulnerability Grant Application and to authorize the chairman
Grant application and to authorize the chairman to sign the 2022 Municipal Vulnerability
Move, move we sign, authorize the chair to sign the grant and the Board sign a letter of support.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Didn't, part of that is the grant application is for the creation of a, for the Climate Action Plan is part of that as well, for the grant related to that. Would partially fund that, as long as we fund up to 25%? Is that how I understood that? So that's an opportunity to, okay, great. Next item is to review and act on the 2022 Garage License Renewals. Attached list.
Move approval of the Garage License Renewals pursuant to the list provided in the agenda.
Second, for purposes of discussion. Are we all set with these, Taylor, that, I figured they got the paperwork, but we've got, they've made the payments for the permits, et cetera?
Justin said that everyone submitted ahead of the deadline.
I did, I spoke with Justin also about whether or not we were certain that the businesses were meeting the stipulations of their permit and not violating any aspect of the permit. I know that was, there were a couple outstanding that I had concerns with the last time we renewed, and Justin had told me that Seth Colby had said that the issues were resolved. So I'm comfortable moving forward because I did ask.
Good, thank you. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to review and act on the 2022 Dealer of Precious Metals License Renewals.
Move approval of the list as provided in the agenda.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And then to review and act on the one-day all-alcohol license request of Joe Yusuf, St. Mary's, Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive for the following events, wedding on May 21st, 2022 from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and wedding on May 27th, 2022 from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Move approval.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we are into correspondence. Where are we? We have an email dated April 11th, 2022 from Ohan Gundo regarding an invitation to attend an exhibition on Hindu civilization in Shrewsbury, I believe it's the India Society, on April 30th, so noted. Next item is an email dated April 11th, 2022 from Ed Sterdevant, who was tree service contractor for National Grid regarding National Grid Vegetation Maintenance Notification, Shrewsbury, so noted. Next item is a letter received April 12th, 2022 from Marie Claire Rigby, Lead Vegetarian Strategy Specialist, National Grid regarding National Grid Vegetation Maintenance Notification, Shrewsbury, so noted. Next letter, next item is a letter received April 13th, 2022 from Alan Jarrell, 67 North Quincyman Avenue, Number 9. Mr. Jarrell submitted his letter of resignation from the Finance Committee. We thank him for his service and wish him the best of his luck in his future endeavors, so noted. Next item is a letter received April 20th, 2022 from the Town of Shrewsbury Scholarship Committee regarding the 2022 scholarship cycle, so noted. I just wanted to point out that 25 $500 scholarships were awarded to deserving high school students, high school seniors this cycle. Since its inception in 1995, Shrewsbury Scholarship Committee has awarded a total of $270,500 in scholarships to 541 high school seniors, including the 2022 cycle, so thank you for that, so noted. Next item is letter received April 21st, 2022 from Nick Repetka, Highway Divisions Manager regarding a street sweeping report, so noted. And the last item is email dated April 22nd, 2022 from Larry Cardani, 41 Irida Road, providing feedback on the Climate Action Plan, so noted. That's all we have for items on the agenda. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for joining us, and good night.